Okay, welcome everyone. If you're here to talk about achieving inclusive growth in the role of district and borough councils, then you're absolutely in the right place. My name's Andrew Laird, I'm the chief executive of Mutual Ventures and we are a consultancy that works with central government and local councils and local places around place leadership and that includes supporting places to achieve inclusive growth and we'll be talking a lot about that today. I'm delighted to be joined by Sally Greenrod Smith, who is the director of Planning, Regeneration and Communities at West Lindsay District Council. Sally, great to have you on board. And Jill Callanan, who is the former director of Growth at North East Derbyshire District Council. Jill, great to have you as well. And then also joined by my colleague at Mutual Ventures, Mark Bandali. So few housekeeping bits and pieces. We are recording this, so no need to take copious notes. You can re-listen to it and share it with colleagues. And if you've got any questions, do feel free to use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen and post questions and I'll do my best to get around those and put them to our panelists. So just by way of introduction, economic growth is obviously a key ambition of this new government and is likely to feature heavily in tomorrow's budget. So we're recording this on the 29th of October, the budget is obviously tomorrow. So perhaps by the time you listen to this, we will know what that contains, but not yet as we're talking. So the budget, it brings up all sorts of questions in terms of how this growth will be achieved. So an important one is how the various tiers of government and regional government like MCA's organise themselves and work together and how local government works with private, with the private sector, with education and skills providers and with the community sector as well. And certainly from our perspective, and I know all of the panelists' perspective, it's not just about growth, it's about inclusive growth. And that is important when considering reducing economic inactivity and addressing the widening health inequalities and low levels of investment at a national, regional and local level. So lots to talk about today. So we're not doing any formal presentation, we're having a discussion. And I've got a series of questions that I'm going to put to our panelists. And then if you've got questions, if you're listening or if you're watching, please do pop them in the Q and A function, like I said. So Sally, I'm going to come to you first. So given your role as director of Regen at West Lindsay, what do you think is the case for district and borough councils playing a crucial role in creating growth?
Morning, thank you, Andrew. Good to see everybody. Okay, so I suppose, and we're going to hear this tomorrow, it's all about delivering growth, isn't it? Creating opportunities for growth at all levels. And for me, achieving ambitious, sustainable and inclusive growth requires action across all levels of government, right from the ground up through every role of authority that there is. And that requires good people ultimately, doesn't it? And lots of really well timed, evidence led conversation. And what we're able to do in our district council roles is bring together that knowledge, skills and expertise about our local area, our connections to businesses and employers and particularly our passion for place. And I always sort of describe this as our salesperson role, I suppose, about our place. What works really well? How do we get development happening? What's the offer of local government? So what's the nuts and bolts that local government can bring? Foreign investor, for example. And often we hear businesses want to understand how things actually work. So how do you manage your CCTV? Or what's your street cleansing regime? Or how are your car parks managed? What do you do to drive footfall in your town centres? Those kind of things actually are what businesses are looking for from the public sector. We try really hard in West Lindsay to ensure that we have the best possible soft landing for businesses. So whether that's planning inquiries or trying to understand business rates and opportunities there, even simple things like street naming and numbering or needing licensing support. All of those things make for a really strong initial impression and relationship with those looking at investing in our places. And then obviously there's critical things like our strategic planning role as well. So how are we ensuring the right level of housing to meet economic growth opportunities? How are we evidencing the direction of travel for our economic growth? Ensuring the right land supply in the right timely fashion in the right place is always a critical one. I think from an economic perspective, it can be quite challenging to evidence the amount of economic land that is needed. And it's something that we've spent a lot of time looking at in Lincolnshire. And businesses expect to be able to have a really clear understanding of the route to securing planning approval. And that starts with well managed, well led and locally planned evidence through that planning process. And that's very much our approach here in West Lindsay. Understand the place, articulate what's really great about the place and ensure it's well planned and well managed. And I think what district and borough councils can do is give that very local and personal touch. So we'll often find that we'll be chatting to, you know, external investors, senior people in big companies. And actually they want to understand a little bit about what are their children going to do at the weekend? What will the schools be like? Where do you get out and have a walk? And that real place based information as well as making significant business decisions. They want to understand that their employers and their families are going to have a really nice, successful life built in the place where they're looking to invest. So I see us as place ambassadors, selling the place, but making things really easy for people to come and do business with us.
That's brilliant, Sally. And a lot of what you're describing there is the fabric of life in a sense. You know, it's the what makes for a nice experience living somewhere and a kind of prosperous experience living somewhere. And I know that our team and Mark in particular was lucky enough to work with you at West Lindsay on your levelling up project. We obviously don't talk about levelling up anymore. But that was a really exciting moment that involved the putting in place of a kind of an anchor institution there. Do you want to say a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're really proud and we call it Luff. We've sort of, we've continued, we've continued the theme but slightly tweaked it, I suppose. And for us, securing the money to deliver the levelling up interventions was that absolutely significant step change moment in the journey of our town centre and our principal town, which is Gainsborough in Lincolnshire. Very similar to many small towns, sort of 22, 23,000 people live here. Not quite big enough to sort of attract and retain some of the more significant retailers and leisure operators. So we've really had to roll our sleeves up as a district council and directly intervene to bring a brand new cinema operator to Gainsborough as the anchor of our future leisure and particularly even an economy offer. And that's working really well. We're about six months to go until that cinema, four screen cinema is completed. And already we're seeing a significant impact that's having around the town. Many more investment inquiries, vacant shops that have been empty for many, many years, starting to get filled and that trickle effect working really well. And we're spending a lot of time working directly with existing and new local businesses, ensuring they understand the journey. They can see the aspiration, they understand the potential footfall once the cinema is open and really getting people to feel part of that. And that's working very well. And we've seen, as I've said, lots of new businesses coming into the town. So that's been the step change for us. And the role that we took as the district council there was about bringing together the evidence. We had to, we knew that we had to do the work to bring the business case for that funding together. We understood the economy, we knew what the gaps were, we understood the market failure and we were able to articulate that with our partners to government and create a case for funding.
It's fantastic. I remember visiting, visiting Gainsborough and just the potential is fantastic. You've got the kind of the centre and the site for the cinema is fantastic. And then you've got that, that kind of sweep down to the riverside and things. So yeah, really great to hear about that. Thank you very much, Sally. Mark, if we just bring you in, just to bring us back to one of our main topics now. So could you just talk us through the difference between growth for growth sake and inclusive growth?
Sure, thank you, Andrew. Hi, everyone. Morning. I think I described inclusive growth as being, as being where those ambitious growth plans that a place may hold, such as those Sally has described. Those growth plans being very much aligned to the needs of communities and businesses. So it's really around an economic model of development that drives ultimately improved living standards. And it does that by creating social and environmental benefits, by tackling inequalities and making sure that those benefits are very much spread over a place and the people living in that place. So what this is, is inclusive growth is a move away from that sort of traditional trickle down model of economic growth, where the assumption is that growth will bring benefits and those will ultimately be benefits by everyone, realised by everyone. And this is very much coming from a place where, when designing a growth strategy, it's about understanding what the systemic and what the generational challenges facing a place are. And then working out how growth can, as a catalyst, can help to, to address those challenges. And none of this will be done overnight, there's no silver bullet. But ultimately, it's that strategic planning approach that Sally mentioned, which understands the lived experience of communities, of residents and of businesses. And really tries to align the ambitions for growth with the needs of those local stakeholders. So you get to a point, I think, where decision makers across a place have two key questions. The first is, how do you grow an economy? And the second, how do you grow an economy in a way that ensures that everyone benefits? And those, I think, are two key questions for decision makers. And within that, I think there's a really interesting series of questions, which is those investments that Sally was talking about as part of the Luff bid. I remember clearly the question we were looking to answer is how, how will those investments promote the wider determinants of health, the challenges that Gainsborough's facing? And looking at those determinants of health through several lenses. So early years, education and skills, income and living standards, employment and working conditions and preventing ill health, all as a way of sort of developing this healthy and sustainable place. So I think that's, those are critical considerations from a council perspective. And as Sally's mentioned, a district perspective. The question then becomes, how does a council in partnership with place based partners use the levers and resources available to them to catalyse that inclusive growth? And critical to that, as I've said, is that working in partnership. I think that, you know, this is a complex web across a system that, where shared common priorities, which ultimately lead to inclusive growth and shared benefits. It won't happen overnight and it very much needs that long term strategic approach, where all of the key actors really buy into what good looks like in 10 years' time, because this will take time. But it is very much a strategic approach to ensuring shared benefits at the end of it. And those being economic, yes, but also social and environmental.
Yeah.
Not a particularly neat summary, but there you go, Andrew.
No, it's, it's pretty good, Mark, it's pretty good. And I think one of the things that we've been talking about for a number of years now is trying to break down the silos between the people stuff that a council does and the place stuff. And sometimes in the past, those two sides of the council coin have remained quite separate with the kind of economic regen side of the business or the council doing its own thing. And then the people service is doing things. And I think one of the things that we are quite pleased with in the work that we've done across the levelling up projects that we've worked on is bringing those two closer together.
Absolutely. And what, you know, it's, it's obviously a key underlying factor of the budget tomorrow already. The signalling is that, as well as councils, the NHS has a critical role to play in driving growth for the economy. So you would naturally think of councils, private businesses, local businesses being the key sort of drivers there. But the, but the, the local health system has an incredibly role to play. You've mentioned economic inactivity, which, which, you know, if addressed will, will help catalyse that growth. So it really is a full, everyone has a role to play, I would argue, in the decision making capacity to create those conditions and those plans, which align very much with the challenges most places will have experienced for generations.
Fantastic, thanks, Mark. Jill, I want to come to you now, it's really good to have you on this conversation with us. You've worked at a district level, you've worked at a unitary level. Obviously, they're quite different in terms of the powers that they have and ability to influence. I wonder if you could just say something about how those tiers work together and what some of the challenges might be of working at a district level versus a unitary level?
Yeah, quite happy. And so my sort of role was around economic development and physical regeneration. So I can fit very much from that point of view. I found it easier to work in unitary than I did in a district. And there were a number of factors to do with that. One of them was you've got political alignment. So in the unitary, you've got, you know, you've got all your highways, you've got your, your education department. And you, you're all moving in the same direction. And just by the fact that you've got two tiers and you've got a county council who have slightly different priorities, they're looking at the whole area. You can get a rub there and what you're then trying to do is trying to influence county to make what's happening in your area a priority for them. And that's not only possible, always possible, because they might have 10 year plans for infrastructure that actually don't align with what you need to do in your town in the next four years, because that's how long you've got your funding for. So I think, I agree with Sally when we say that they know what's going on in their area. We know what, what people need, but that level of influence, I don't believe is there. Particularly when you start looking at a regional level. I think unless you can come together politically, and it tends to be politically to go to say, we want this, things get a little bit lost. So I think there's a priority issue between districts and unitaries. I think that there's different levels of influence. I've certainly found while being in a unitary that there's much more influence, much more able to get hold of money. And that might be that they're better resourced because they're bigger, like authorities have got more money. But there's some really good people in districts as well. And I think also each local authority is very different. So, you know, you might have a very rural area, they've got different issues from the suburbs of a city. And so trying to find something that, one, one thing that fits all is really, really difficult. And so it then becomes difficult for the counties to be able to deliver on each of those different agendas. And therefore coordinating services becomes more difficult as well. So I think districts have challenges. And when it comes to their politicians, if they're, what my experience is, if they are aligned at county and district, life gets an awful lot easier.
Thanks, Jill. Sally, I don't know if you want to come back on that. So Jill's laid out some of the challenges that new districts face. So is that fair or would you have a different view?
I think it, I think it very much depends on your geography and your players, doesn't it? I don't think it's necessarily as straightforward as life's rosy in unitary councils from an economic growth and sustainable regeneration perspective. And I've also worked across both of those sectors. Ultimately, it comes down to, it comes down to the players, doesn't it? And the quality of the proposals you're able to put forward and the persuasive tactics you're able to use. And I think absolutely politics play into this significantly. And that's why we should always use a really robust set of evidence, help that to drive and steer conversation, have that clear vision, bring partners and actors together. And I, and I think those principles can transcend multiple layers of government and different politics as well. So whilst it can certainly be more challenging from a West Lindsay perspective, I think we use to our maximum benefit the powers and abilities that we have in local government. We're very aspirational and accountable for our decisions, but we work very closely and very well with our partners and colleagues across the county. And I think as we move into a mayoral county combined authority structure, very much in Lincolnshire, we're taking the view that we need everybody's skills if we're really going to do this and do it well. And everybody will have a role to play at the level in which they're working. So we, we approach this from the perspective that we wouldn't, we wouldn't see a ceiling of opportunity or ability. We would, we would see where we can play and where we can deliver.
Thanks, Sally. Mark, do you want to come in?
Sure, thank you, Andrew. Yeah, just really listening to both points. And I think, you know, regional or local differences, you know, we need to fully accept them. It's not the same in every place. But I think, just reflecting on where I've worked with borough and district councils, who have been able to, going back to Sally's point around championing, around controlling what you can, but also championing. Where, where I think economic growth and specifically inclusive growth has, has gained traction and has been delivered, I think is where across a place you get all of the actors. So that may be a district, borough, unitary and potentially a combined authority. Not easy this, but getting them all onto the same page in terms of what a vision for the place looks like. And, and really getting some shared priorities in that respect to say, this is, you know, this is what we all collectively, our resources and our levers, we will target. But also underpinning that, I think, is this sort of commitment to the person and the place rather than organisational boundaries and budgets. So ultimately, if we, if we combine, if the power of the collective realises these benefits, it doesn't really matter which organisation is ultimately sustaining savings through reduced demand on services or whatever it may be. Ultimately, this is a collective approach to improving outcomes for residents and businesses. So there's a lot, you know, Sally's mentioned those relationships being critical and Jill, the political alignment being critical. I think those are two key conditions, but ultimately the aim is about a collective approach to addressing the needs in a particular place. Easy for me to say, and actually this, you know, it's, it will be incredibly difficult, given the spinning plates here. But I think having a collective long term vision and a series of combined shared priorities are helpful conditions and a decent start in order to move things forward. Local government structures are complicated, but ultimately, you know.
They, they are complicated. If there's a takeaway from this discussion, it can be that local government structures are complicated. Jill, do you want to come back in on this?
Yeah, I mean, just, just to finish up, and I agree with everything everybody says, it's very complicated. One of the things that struck me, because I work across quite a few councils now doing different work, is that government, the previous government gave out loads of Luff money to lots of different councils, all of which, a lot of them borrowed. And then everybody, then everybody's then trying to align their priorities against those, those, delivering those little bits where previously they had a whole different agenda. So it comes, it's, it's good from a local point of view, but then there is a knock on effect, which I probably feel we haven't felt quite yet.
Thank you very much, Jill. Sally, I want to come back to you. So we've, we've had a good, we've really set the scene here, I think. But just for people listening, it'd be great to talk about some of the specific levers that district councils can pull in terms of inclusive growth. So just kind of real practical examples, I suppose, would be good.
Yeah, absolutely. And I suppose, I sort of think that what our teams do across economic growth and sustainable regeneration is we make things happen that the market won't deliver on its own. And that's where our intervention really adds value and makes a huge difference. Specifically for us, that often looks like building those partnerships between local businesses, employers, other public sector agencies, sometimes the voluntary sector and often education across all levels. And we've seen some real benefits to doing that here in West Lindsay, where we've brought local businesses in. We've run aspiration assemblies with many, many different, particularly primary schools actually. As we had a challenge around primary access to careers, information, advice and guidance. And we were able to broker those relationships for, for schools where they just, they just didn't know where to start ultimately. They didn't, they weren't well resourced, but they knew they needed to get those employment and opportunity messages into their young people, who were perhaps from families where they weren't that experienced in the world of work. And we've had everybody from local manufacturing businesses to public health organisations, to councils and so on and so forth, going into our primary schools. And, and just talking to the, the children and young people, really simple messages about what their job is, how they got where they are and how they engage very locally. And that connection that our teams have done between schools and between local businesses has been absolutely critical in being able to do that. On the flip side, we also continue and have always used the planning system to deliver benefits, particularly thinking about section 106 contributions and how they can support health outcomes or how they can deliver new or enlarged educational facilities. We spent a lot of time working through the neighbourhood planning agenda to ensure that everything that we do through the planning system has that real community angle. We have 97 parishes in West Lindsay, so a very rural district as well as our bigger towns. So our neighbourhood planning officer spends a lot of time out and about hearing about the infrastructure improvements that will make a real difference. And that's where we're able to use the community infrastructure levy to support those, those smaller infrastructure developments. But they do make a real difference. It might be something simple like a footpath between two villages to enable people to have walking and cycling access to parks and play spaces. Those kind of things that we're really able to intervene and support with from a district council perspective. As I've said, we also spend a lot of time developing the evidence base, shaping and understanding what that means, what the gaps are and creating those business cases for funding, investment and regeneration. Equally, we spend a lot of time talking with our businesses and our growth sectors and working up specific strategies and interventions to support those important sectors that are growing. And for West Lindsay, that's particularly around agri tech and defence. So we're doing a lot of work with the university, with the LEAP and with all the businesses in those sectors to understand and project forward what the opportunities for growth are. And where are the gaps and where are the barriers and how might we want to target funding? And we've used some of that work and matched it up with our approach to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. And everybody's dying to see what happens tomorrow in the budget and we'll see where we get to. But in terms of cluster and growth strategies, then we were able to use the prosperity fund to target specifically some rural business support grants. And again, aligning, aligning with the university, who are bringing through those new micro businesses. And we knew that there were gaps in them being able to access finance for equipment and for training and that kind of thing. So we were able to use that evidence and intelligence to shape and, and make a difference to those businesses. So for us, it's about bringing those partners together, understanding the challenges and then being able to really creatively and specifically come up with interventions to overcome some of those barriers and those challenges.
Thanks, Sally. And just while I've got you, a question that's come in, links to what you've just said. Actually, you mentioned big effort engaging with local businesses and, and commercial organisations. The question is basically saying, it seems easier to engage with those types of organisations than other types of stakeholders like community groups on inclusive growth. How do you, do you agree with that and how do you do that?
So we're really fortunate here in West Lindsay that we have a fantastic communities team, a small but perfectly formed communities team. I should point out that just a couple of people focusing on this. But they're part of our planning and regeneration team as well. So they spend a lot of time engaging with our community organisations, our voluntary sector. It was a very specific and targeted strand of our UK Shared Prosperity Fund work as well. We created a grant programme to help our community organisations to deliver important infrastructure in their places, be that access to better broadband facilities, things like solar panel installations to green up village halls or all the way through to capacity funding to help them support feasibility studies. We've done, we've supported things like understanding how community organisations could take a lead on managing green spaces and that sort of thing. So I think where we found that challenging, we, we created a grant funding regime, which opened the door to a conversation. And now we've got a much broader range of engagement. But also in a more traditional way, our neighbourhood planning role always opens that, that door as well. We're one of the organisations across the country that have got the most neighbourhood plans through and adopted. And I think once you start talking to community groups about, well, actually, this level of growth will drive some community infrastructure levy into your community. And what you need to do is think about how you want to invest that. There's a real incentive for those organisations to then engage with the council as they, that you can start to see them understand that they will have a real stake in how that funding can be invested going forward. So again, it comes back to people, doesn't it? Our communities know they can ring up our communities team with whatever that question or query is. And it might take us a little bit of time to answer, but we'll get there in the end. And it's that relationship we've got with them.
Very interesting. Thank you, Sally. Jill, if I could come to you with a question. You talked about the need for kind of political alignment and the importance of the politics of the whole thing. And in your experience, what role do elected members play in delivering an inclusive growth agenda?
I would say, I would always say to this, but I think it's fairly pivotal really. The one thing about your elected members is they understand what's happening on the ground because they cover the area. They then become elected and then when they get to the executive level where, you know, in cabinet, that's when they need to get. That's when they need to get strategic and how understand. Through the help of officers, what is required in their area and what should they be going out to try and secure, be it funding, influence. Um joining with other other councils to do things. So they're the ones that do that. The the chief execs and the directors work in the background to make that, you know, to make those sorts of things unhappy and to support that. And to work out the delivery. But that that political aspect is really important. And of course, it always helps. Um when people are on the same political agenda. My experience also been is where you've got a stable um. Ca- cabinet or political group within all of your own control, you tend to make. It seems to make more progress because they're not having to relearn, they're not having to learn the jobs in the in the first place. And I think it's always quite interesting when you look at um district and borough councils and county councils, you will find that. Well, I my experience is you find a lot of the cabinet members are also county council members because that influence needs to go through. If you want to get get things done. So I I consider them really important, really important part of of getting getting stuff done in your area.
And just as as a follow up question to that, so quite often where there's a Meryl combined authority in place, the mayor. Is from a different party than maybe a lot, maybe all sometimes of the constituent councils in there. So I want to just turn to what the relationship between. Councils and combined authorities is um. So Sally, if I could come to you first, you you you're going to be part of the Greater Lincolnshire. Merrill Combined Authority, which has been approved now. Congratulations to everybody involved in that. What difference do you think that will make and how do you anticipate working with with the the new MCA?
Um so we're really excited. It's been a long time coming in Lincolnshire. I always say, I think I've grown three children in the time it's taken to get a devolution deal in place in Lincolnshire. So really. Warmly embraced from an officer perspective. Um I think we're excited because across Lincolnshire, there are some huge economic um opportunities. And I think it's going to take us working together across the whole of Greater Lincolnshire to unlock those right from decarbonising. Decarbonising, decarbonising the Humber, the opportunities on the free ports, right down to the ports in Boston. There's real alignment between that economic strategy. And I think that's what's going to galvanise the potential of of Lincolnshire and its contribution to UK PLC. Now, that's definitely not going to be easy in all places and and there are many. Towns and the city across Lincolnshire that will be looking for funding opportunities, but we've developed a a vision for Greater Lincolnshire. That's based on those significant economic drivers. Um and that was a fundamental part of our devolution proposal. And that was a vision that was actually led by the districts and embraced all of our county and unitary um partners. But it was really that tool that enabled us to put together the building blocks of what will be our local plan for growth. So. Um we're well versed in working across many different political and organisational spectrums in in Lincolnshire. We've done it for many, many years and. No doubt there'll be challenges along the way, but um I think the the consensus is that we're excited to get stuck in and to see what. Difference we can really make to our people and our places.
Yeah, it it is very exciting. We're we're also doing some work with North East Lincolnshire, which is a unitary. Uh based around Grimsby and they're very excited about it. They're Rob Walsh and the team in the council and other partners are really excited about it. So. Yeah, Greater Lincolnshire is going to be to be exciting. Jill, on on that question of kind of the role of. Uh Merrill Combined Authorities and things, what's what's your view on how this all works together?
Um well, to be fair, they've been doing it for years. In one way or another, you do it by the LEP, you did it by the. Um development agencies before that. So. It's kind of, if you wait long enough, as I say, everything comes around again. This is slightly different because we've actually got an elected person in 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 front. So and these are politicians, they're used to working, finding a way of working together. Um and what you as as the working have worked in the background now, it 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 can look all smooth. But there is a lot going on in the background to make it look like that and and to get consensus. Um to try and get both benefit and it's it's um you know, deals are done and it's it's like. It's like anything else in government.
Yeah, it's it's interesting actually how much of that Merrill Combined Authority, the mayor's role is a convening one. Uh as much as anything else, you know, I know Andy Street when he has has talked a lot since he left office in the West Midlands about how he actually. Did things and he he was basically saying that he very rarely used any of his formal powers. It was the it was the power of being. A a convener and a representative and that I think is one of the most exciting things about it. So, yeah, we we watch with interest as to what's. Going to happen in lots of places, but particularly Greater Lincolnshire. Mark, Sally earlier gave a really good uh gave gave really good practical examples of some of the levers that. You districts and boroughs can pull. I wonder if you could do a similar job on what you think that the the conditions. For inclusive growth are that need to be be in place.
Yeah, sure. Um so some of this, I think we've touched on already, but I I do think in terms of conditions, that they're really important. Um from a from a borough and district perspective, I think it's it the the there's an importance of each council having. Very clear understanding about their role as place leaders and that being critical in terms of what they can control, what they influence and what they advocate. But but being being comfortable in eh eh as an organisation in yourself to know what what your role is and then by definition, how you work with others. To achieve that common purpose. So uh uh underpinning all of that is a clear vision, I think, in terms of. You know, what good looks like and, you know, how how a pla- a place's vision and plan fits in with the wider picture that we've just discussed. In terms of that that regional combined um authority approach. I think Sally's touched on this. A borough district council that's strong in its understanding of the challenges facing businesses and communities is critical. So that sort of lived experience. Not just an understanding, oh yes, that's in the those wards are experiencing deprivation and disadvantage. But understanding the core, the 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 reasons, the 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 causes for that disadvantage. And really addressing both the cause and the symptom through an inclos- inclusive growth strategy, I think is eh eh is important. For that to happen, effective neighbour neighbourhood governance and decision making structures in place, I think, to really understand that lived experience. You know, as as Sally mentioned through, for example, her communities team. But ultimately, I think thi- this is about aligning ambitious growth plans with the needs of communities and an organisation that's comfortable. Doing that and has the intelligence locally to be able to collect that the detail and then use it for decision making. Is, I think, um you know, those are conditions that would really help. Sally Sally's also touched on a need to potentially do things differently. Uh councils that are open to new types of relationships and connections, whether that be with the unitary, whether that be through with combined authorities. But also schools, FE colleges, neighbourhood teams, third sector organisations, as well as the the private sector. Wha- what being able to answer the question, what's what form of governance uh structures and partnerships will enable. A place to thrive and to 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 sort of eh eh focus on key priorities is I think important. And then finally, my final point is around council decision making structures. And making sure that that inclusive growth consideration is ingrained within decision making. Now, for that to happen, you need that understanding of lived experience. As Jill's mentioned, you you need members who are energised and focused on the social, environmental aspects of, you know, that that. Linked to need and ultimately getting to a point as an organisation where you're able to satisfy the question and answer the question. How is every eh each investment going to demonstrate that it will positively impact on at least one of the wider determinants of health? You know, really much asking that, answering that so what question? Because tha- that balance that I described at the start, there's economic growth and there's the inclusive aspects of that. And there very much is that consideration about using growth to address some of the 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 significant systemic challenges. So a decision making process as well as a cultural sort of the development of a cultural cons. Environment to be to be able to think like that. From an inclusive growth perspective, I think those are essential conditions if if we, you know, if a place is going to focus on this in a sustainable way.
So, Mark, that's great. That all sounds great. And I think we'd all adopt that approach immediately. But how do you? You and Sally, if I could ask you you this question, how how do you actually make sure that best laid plans? Social value and you improving people's health and the wider determinants of health and all that. How do you actually? Monitor and make sure that when the commercial investment actually comes in, it just doesn't say, well, we're not going to worry about all that now. We're just going to focus on making money.
It's really hard, isn't it? You know, what we do on a day to day basis is difficult and it it comes down to. Each relationship that you have and each project that you're working on. Um in an ideal world, you've got a number of metrics that you're trying to monitor, haven't you? And in reality, it doesn't always go according to plan. Sometimes you can ask a business ten times to tell you how many apprentices they've employed and. And often you won't get that back. So a lot of being able to evidence it is absolutely reliant upon. Building those relationships and being able to articulate why you're having these conversations and why it matters. And. That's something in West Lindsay that that we do a lot across our housing developments in particular. So some of our housing markets in Gainsborough. Fairly low value, particularly across the town. Um and we're we're quite protective of what comes forward in some of those spaces, actually. And and we strive to deliver really high quality developments and we want there to be good green spaces. We want the homes to be the best possible standards that they can. We want the housing mix and tenures to be absolutely spot on for our communities. Because we're still dealing with the mistakes of fifty and sixty years ago and we're determined that we're not going to repeat those mistakes. So. I think it takes the team across planning, regeneration communities across the council to come together and share that vision for a place. And then every interaction we have with an investor or a developer or a third sector organisation. It's repeating those messages and sometimes that's really difficult and we do get into some very challenging situations. And sometimes that means. You lose a developer or you lose an investment, but what we're trying to do in West Lindsay is wherever we can possibly do it. Maintain those principles of growth being sustainable and inclusive and um. It's slow and it's difficult, but with the right vision and with the team on message, it can happen and and you can make those changes. And I think you have to stand by what you're doing and be really clear about why you're doing it. Um but it it does work and it is it is paying off here in Gainsborough. A lot of it as well comes down to really good communication and marketing. Um and we have some absolutely outstanding individuals in West Lindsay that help with that. They help when things don't quite go right. But they're also really good at planning for the long term and ensuring that our community messaging and our marketing and our engagement of partners and investors and. Providers is is absolutely spot on. So that where we do make a stand and we are really clear where something isn't going well and we need to intervene. We're really clear why we're doing it and the outcomes that we're looking for. So I think that that branding, that marketing, that messaging. Becomes a really key component of how we all engage from a a growth and sustainable regeneration perspective as well.
Thank you, Sally. Really good. Um Jill, there's a question come in here just about. What what the panel sees as the biggest challenge to making inclusive growth. And place based working the norm. And I guess that's linked to maybe the previous question I posed to Sally. But I wonder if you've got any thoughts on that. What are the challenges to to this whole agenda?
It's interesting because while Sally's been talking, I've been looking at that thinking, oh, that's a that's a really interesting question. Depends what you mean by making it the norm, I suppose. I mean, oh, if we're talking about. Councils putting things in place when developments come forward or having strategies. Well, in some ways, they're already in place. It's about how that's embedded. So everybody's thinking about. That now, that's a bigger question and I haven't got quite got a gotten an answer. I think the first thing is everybody needs to understand. What it means and does everybody have the same understanding of what that means? And I'm not sure. People do and I don't think government departments do necessarily, depending on which which department you're in. So I think that would be my starting point would be, let's define what it means and what we're trying to achieve with it.
Hmm. And it's it's interesting because we're working with a whole range of councils on these types of issues and there are some places, I I won't name them, but. They they maybe have a particular stellar industry in on on their patch that. Uh you know, a lot of people are attracted, they're very highly educated, ha- highly skilled. But what the councils in question have not achieved particularly well is ensuring that 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 the supply chain. Needed to service those really exciting industries is local. And eh that everyone benefits from it. So it is, it is a, there are things that councils can do. And there are, there are, you know, proactive things that. That you councils and partners can do if the right incentives are in place and the right focus is in place and the right plan is in place, the. The sort of things Mark talked about. Um because qu- quite often there is. Uh st- stellar industry or a stellar company that employs a lot of people who often come from from outside and it just doesn't filter down. So. Really interesting question that thank you uh to Penelope, I think it was, who put that to us. So um I just want to ask. Now, the budget's tomorrow. Um what single thing would each of you like to see in it? From an inclusive growth perspective and, you know. Uh this is a tricky question, but just, you know, if you had a free rein or well, what would you like to see? Sally, do you have a thought?
It'd be dangerous if they give gave me free rein on on that, Andrew, but I I think the sector's calling out for some certainty around UK Shared Prosperity Funding. And absolutely quick time. Um we've developed a really robust UK SPF investment programme here. We're almost um seventy five percent the way through the expenditure. Um it would be a crying shame if that all comes to an end in March with nothing to replace it because we've spent three years. Establishing a really strong regime. A lot of that reaches across Lincolnshire as well, where we're supporting into the business growth hubs to ensure a. Really good generic level of business support across Lincolnshire as well. So it has wider implications than just those delivery organisations. So. That would be my number one. Let's sort that out as a critical issue. Um but then I I hope that there is a a longer term view and vision for the funding of growth and particularly. Interventions from a housing perspective as well as what comes next from a a levelling up and regeneration fund because it's. It's important that we're able to start to make those longer term plans, isn't it? So um get something under the under our belts around UK SPF. And we can crack on and get that sorted. And then let's have a proper think about how we invest in what's needed to grow our economies in the next five to ten years.
Very good. And Jill, before I get your answer on what you'd like to see tomorrow, I just want to get a quick view from you on. The MHCLG's long term plan for towns, which is one of those pots of funding that Sally's talking about. So. I think it's something like twenty million o- o- over ten years. Is that, no, obviously. That that's at risk now, I guess. There are questions around that. Is that a good way of funding a place?
I do, I I was, when I first looked at it, I wasn't that much of a fan, but actually I've grown to see that that there are some real local benefits to places. Um and there is local control of it. And I mean, I don't mean by, I mean by the fact that the council's the accountable body. But actually, in the ones where we've been involved in, they're very much the local community have taken ownership of that. And said, actually, this is what we need in here. And it's been interesting to see that there's been quite a lot of emphasis on skills. And getting neat kids into back into education. So. It I think, yeah, I think there is a a place for it and doing it over ten years, which seems an awful long time, but actually. And there will be changes in boards and stuff, but there is an opportunity to see if that has an influence. I think by doing it over that length of time.
Very good. And then your wish for the budget tomorrow?
Well, for me, it goes back to very much for basic, if you, inclusive growth is about people, really, and I think. You've got to start with housing. If you're going to have people then growing up to be able to go to school, get jobs, get skilled up, they've got to have a safe place to live. And um and a nice place to live. So that's where I would be putting my money.
Thank you very much, Jill. Mark, what about you? Wishes for the budget tomorrow?
Uh I'm uh gonna stay true to form and go for a technical issue. I I think. I think there would be, so. What what the levelling up fund was a lot of things, some of it goods, the way it was delivered, you know, had had its challenges. But ultimately, at its heart, it required each each applicant to demonstrate. you know, had had its challenges, but ultimately at its heart, it required each each applicant to demonstrate how how an investment would demonstrably impact on a wider determinant of health. So, you know, housing may be one, income maybe another, skills, whatever it may be, access to green spaces. All of these things are important per se, but also form part of the wider prevention agenda. I would like to see at a local authority level, potentially driven by central government guidance, more of an emphasis when appraising investments on what the impact will be on those wider determinants of health. The levelling up fund application form did it very well. The Green Book, as it currently stands, does it okay. But ultimately, as a way of linking growth to inclusive growth and prevention agenda, because the two are very much interlinked, I think a strengthening of the so what question from a social and environmental perspective on any investment appraisal would would in the long term reap significant benefits because it would require decision makers to think about things from several different angles rather than just simply, how much is this going to generate for the economy?
Very good. Mark, if Rachel Reeves is looking for a headline grabbing rabbit out of the hat tomorrow, updated guidance on business cases is 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 the one. If you're watching, if you you heard it here first. There's a question just here about, I I think essentially what this question is getting at is it's all very well talking about all this stuff pre-budget, but are we going to be doing any more conversations like this post-budget? From you, Mark?
Yeah, I I certainly hope so. Obviously, it depends on what's in the budget tomorrow, but also those sort of policy announcements and positions that follow the budget. Obviously, the headline is growth and then it's about how it's achieved and what it really means. So we'd certainly, once we had a look at the detail and understood the what's planned, I I think it would be, you know, I'm really excited about the opportunities here. So it'd be great once we're on top of the detail to reconvene and and discuss some of how things can be delivered rather than what's going to be in the budget. That would be a
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Sally. Thank you, Jill. I'm going to draw us to a close, always like to, to give people a bit of time to get to their next meeting. So huge thank you to the panelists and to people who have joined us. I will be sending out the recording of this to everybody who registered and do feel free to pass that on to any colleagues and to get in touch if you've got any questions. So on that note, I will draw us to a close. Thank you very much.